This conference will now be recorded.
If we have time, yep, if we have time to vote on this in November, we can learn an awful lot from other communities that have had this experience. You know, I think that's one aspect of it. So I've been talking about the money and the revenue. I just don't know if it's worth it at three cents on a dollar, but it could be. But I also think too that, you know, we have such a special community. I'd like to see us keep it special. I mean, places like Saranac Lake and Wilmington, they're all special too. I think we'll see those communities have dispensaries. So I think there'll be opportunities for our residents and our tourists and visitors to be able to, you know, obtain marijuana at these dispensaries and any of the other products that are there. We're busted out at the seams in this community. Everybody here knows it as a result of this pandemic. We don't need more people to be coming up here just to be purchasing, you know, marijuana or products or what have you. I mean, I think we need to keep that in mind. But I mean, if we do decide as a community, and I really think, and I'm urging the board to let us make that decision, let us vote on this. And if the board, if our community decides as a whole, then I think we can go forward together and, and make sure that the dispensary is in the right location. And I know that, you know, Emily, you have a lot of experience in land use, planting and zoning, that you guys will come up with a good location for it and it'll be very discreet. And, you know, we'll do the best we can, but I just really think we need to take a pause here and vote on this in November. It will all help to make sure that it goes on the ballot and then we can all learn an awful lot. So there you have it.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Anyone else like to speak? Jack Hop, I do see the comment in the text box, so that will be recorded.
This is your opportunity, folks. Would anybody like to speak?
Emily, what is the name in the comment box?
Jack Hop. Jack who?
Now I do have another comment, but I figured we'd wait for all the online people to go. I don't know what's better.
So let's see.
Stephanie, like to speak again. Ellen.
Stephanie. Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering if it's put on about, uh, as a ballot measure. Is it, um, just an either or, or is it, uh, it's a no or a yes? Dispensaries, uh, only, uh, yes dispensaries and onsite? Or is it just a single yes or no choice that we have?
Can I, can I speak to that? I think there's some confusion. So if the town board adopts a local law opting out, then that decision, that local law is subject to a permissive referendum. So it would be on the ballot at the next general election. If a petition is filed with a requisite number of signatures, that being 258, then it gets on the ballot. So the voters decide whether or not to overturn the town board's decision to pass the local law opting out. So if the majority says we don't opt out, the local law is set aside and we automatically are opting in. So the voters would decide that at a general election in November.
Thank you.
If we don't do anything, it's automatically in.
And it is the two different issues.
Yeah, and they can be separated.
Yeah, I'm saying that was part of our session, was two different issues.
So if, for example, if the town board were to pass a local law opting out, one local law opting out of the onsite use and a local law opting out of dispensary, both of those local laws would be subject to permissive referendum and get me on the ballot in November. And where the voters would decide whether or not to overturn the local laws that were done. One or the other, or both.
And that was the voters with your side. Whether the board should do something like, kind of like a half and half, you know, like only.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I have questions for you, but I shouldn't wait for after the public hearing, correct? I have questions for you, but I shouldn't wait for after.
Yeah, I can do that in a discussion.
Yeah, yeah. The only reason I spoke now is to just so people listening understand that whole referendum thing.
And I also think that confusion about there's two different, there's two different issues. There's two different issues and they are, and they get, I think Stephanie's point was, if I got it correct, that it's two different votes.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll do again. Brendan again. And, um, so for, just to respond to the like, consuming it in public aspect, to me, that's a little laughable, when not too long ago, I had to walk through the smoking section of Hojos to get to the non-smoking section. So when it comes to public drug use, people are finding caffeine and nicotine being used everywhere. And one of them even harms people secondhand. But also to Allison, thank you very much for your work as an election, for the board elections. It's something we show you to be proud of, in general. Segue though, with Bill, I think he makes a great point about the taxes. That's one of the things that makes me most inclined to want to lean towards opting out at first. It's seeing if we can figure out ways to either have, you know, ideally in the town, but even maybe the county potentially collecting maybe more revenue or maybe just even looking into that a little further. That's something I've been looking at some numbers on and it's not clear because it's tough to tell with the different states how they've got to legalize, what the actual revenue will end up being. And that's with us not even really knowing the end that well. The other thing I would say though is we do have the power, you know, somebody like me most likely going to vote to opt in on both. I could be convinced to opt out on one or both if the language that our town board constructs is pretty accommodating. So, you know, maybe we can do half and half with on consumption or on slave consumption areas. Maybe we do allow the village to not have it in there. And I don't know how much that gets into zoning. I'm not sure if that's separate, but I definitely think if our town board is up to the challenge, which I think you guys can be, we can come up with some clever language so that an opt out is not a strict opt out and might get some people like me to potentially vote for that. So I think it would be nice as a citizen here, I'd like to see maybe one or two potential ideas that the town board, for their potential opt out language. So that would give me a better idea on whether it's worth the wait. Because a year in the grand scheme of things, it's not a long time. At the same time, we never gave the people who have been arrested or prosecuted or our courts that get inundated with all of those, you know, those court cases that are pretty petty. We never gave those people the choice later on. So, you know, it's something to factor in and I just wanted to bring those points up as well.
Thank you. Anybody else next?
Can I just say a few words, words at the end? I still have my, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
You're good.
Okay. It's, it's very interesting to hear everyone speak and their opinions on this. But I am still, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm wondering, it seems like, you know, you're trying to push something forward and there's still doubts in, you know, how to do it, what's the best way? Is the money the, the main number two, number one here? What, what's a town or village or residents or visitors can, you know, take in on this? It just, I sit here and I think, okay, it's a lot about the money I hear. And, uh, and it's rushy. It's, you know, it just seems like the feel here. There are some hesitance to, to jump in, but there is more push to go, go forward with it. And time, time is good, you know? So, um, as I said, opting out, in my opinion, is the best. From what I hear here, um, it's not, I don't see enough reasons to, to speed forward. Let the people decide, opt out and let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you. And to us, Mr.?
Vasagol.
There's a friend, um, texted me with their comments, they're local, could I read their comment?
Sure, they can jump on.
No, I think that, I don't know why. If that's okay. I did read this first, so I'll try to make sure it's appropriate. So it's like it. So this is a comment from my friend and he lives in town here. His name is Nick Soppa. So there's a big push from living in legal states of secure access that has led to a severe discipline or decline in ownership, which seems to pan out. It seems to be a misconception when people hear legal marijuana. They assume everyone who does is going to be smoking friendly places and it being an everyday encounter. Having lived in West Coast states, I have seen very little public consumption, even in large liberal communities. That doesn't even speak to the fact of the economic opportunity available as we try to adapt to our economy and divert some of our economic focus from tourism. Diversity is the, is the foundation to a strong society and multiple economic streams of capital due to a stronger and more tight knit community that can be put back into the park and public programs around here with the tax influx we will see. It seems to be a no brainer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, please? We, the, the public hearing goes until six o'clock. So we're, we're going to sit here until then, if anybody comes up with something you'd like to say.
If one unmuted, Kevin. Leslie, I have to call her.
Leslie, you are unmuted. Would you like to speak?
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I would prefer not to see something like this in town. I think that our kids and whether they're young adults or in their early twenties, let alone older people. I think that something like this is truly a gateway to other opportunities that we don't necessarily want in our town and would change the image of our town. And if people want it, they can get it elsewhere. I just am against this 100%.
Leslie, I don't, you know the last?
Leslie, what is your last name?
It's Volante. It's V as in Victor, O L A N T E. I live on 88 Acorn Street.
Thank you.
So I truly would encourage everyone to just really think this through and let the people vote on it. I don't think that this is something that just a few members should be in charge of. I just, of everyone that I've spoken to, you know, people have commitments. I've got people who are at basketball games tonight, people who are at Christmas parties, they couldn't attend this. There's probably seven people immediately that I've just spoken to about this. I was only made aware of it yesterday. And everyone has, that I've spoken to has been against this. And, you know, wanted me to share this with you guys. And I just think that it should go to the people, not necessarily be decided upon right now. But I can say that we're, none of us think that this is a good idea for our community.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
This is Bill McGee again. Could I, I have a, a comment and a question, if, if I may? Sure. Question to the board, just since we're waiting for others to, to jump on and I'll, and I'll just jump off. I'm, I'm out in Boston and I drove through Great Barrington today. And Great Barrington is a place where you, they have dispensaries. And I know a, a number of people who smoke pot. And I asked them, you know, what an ounce of pot costs, you know? And I was told it's around $400 an ounce. So if we're going to get three cents on a, on a, you know, for $400, that's whatever the math is for that, you know, $13. I mean, do we have any sense, does the board have any sense of revenue projections for a community like ours to have, you know, one dispenser? I can't imagine, you know, if this were to go through, we would have more than one dispensary for our community. Because I do know that the, the Office of Cannabis Management has not decided, you know, population wise, how many they'll put in a, an area. But I mean, does anybody here on the board have any sense of what kind of revenue we would be looking at? You know, and how much, you know, marijuana could potentially be sold in order, you know, to garner, you know, any kind of funds?
I don't think there's a lot of figures on that, Phil. Of course, overall, 13% tax on cannabis sales, 9% is an exercise tax that will go into the state. There's also a 4% sales tax. 25% of that will go to counties and, and 3% or 75% will be distributed to cities, towns and villages. But I, I don't really think that there's been a lot of hard figures on that.
Well, yeah, so if you put, if you put 3%, 3% on, you know, a ton of pot, a thousand, you know, 2,000 pounds of pot, what's that, maybe, you know, $300,000, $400,000, that's a lot of pot. I know there'd be selling, selling other products too as well. I've just, I, I bring it up just to kind of put things in context. There's a lot to learn here. And, you know, as I said earlier, Lake Placid is going to be targeted. It's going to be a very lucrative area to have a dispensary in for the industry. And I just think we need to be very, you know, careful and, you know, prudent and shrewd, I would say, if, if the community decides, if the board decides or the community decides.
Jay, if I may, I did some research and they say the average dispensary is between one and three million. And if you do the math on that, that's between 30,000 and $90,000 of revenue that the town would generate. So the public at large would think is that much revenue comparatively? Is that, is that something that they want to do? And I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just putting that.
Where does the projection of a million dollars of sales come from?
No, I, there's the average of dispensaries. It was just a general sort of research. I didn't define population.
And a question to piggyback on that, is that all products sold by that business or just the cannabis products? Like if they also happen to sell a pack of gum, does that revenue get taxed at that? Or is it just the cannabis products in the dispensary?
Just cannabis.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. So it's good to be clear.
I didn't see, maybe I muted himself. Did you want to speak, Stuart? You went back to mute, but you weren't reading for a second.
This is Leslie, can I speak in again?
Sure.
Okay, so one of the things I remember is when the Phish concert was here and we had all that kind of chaos and the needles in the ground in front of the school. And it was never again, we never did any concerts again. And that brought in a ton of revenue. I think in that same respect, you have to think, before we do something like this, what are we actually opening the door to? I know it's more money, but we've also started what, taxing our Airbnbs? We've got so many Airbnbs and that's going to generate a huge revenue right there that might hopefully maybe counterbalance or offset what would be, you know, brought in by, you know, pot sales. I know a lot of people who smoke pot. I don't personally, but I don't want it around or available to everyone. I don't want to think of drivers smoking pot. And I think that there is potential for a lot of increased costs associated with this, whether it's accidents, whether it's people starting to perceive, say, one area of Lake Placid as a slum area, or whether it's perceived as, you know, a drug area. Personally, me as a parent, I don't want to be bringing my kids where I'm going to think that there are, you know, areas where people are just smoking pot, whether it's on the street or wherever. That's just not what I want to do. I mean, the, we have an ideal community right here where we're, you know, half of us, probably more than that, have opened doors, unlocked cars and everything else. But that's been changing even more so in recent years. I've seen people going down our streets off of Hillcrest who are so messed up on drugs. It's scary, you know, where, you know, my one daughter Lauren has had to call the police before. And I think that this is only opening the door to more of it. And that's the last thing we want to do. And I don't think that there should be a price tag on what we're opening this door to. I just, I just don't think it's worth it. $300,000 or whatever, it's, it's not worth it. So anyways, add up what we're getting in our Airbnbs because that's been taxed free for ages. Okay, I'm done.
Can I jump in again? Does your still have to sit there until six? Here is, here is another thought that I, that kind of, you know, while I'm sitting here listening to the almighty dollar and, and all kinds of things like this. But, uh, does anybody remember how this, or even put into your heads, how this town became what it is today over the years? This was, um, you know, not only a ski and sports, um, town, but it was, it was a fresh air, it was, it was good activities. There's, you know, things that had to do with health. And although I know several people who are, you know, using cannabis and, and, you know, for all kinds of different reasons, um, but it's Lake Placid, where Lake Placid put on the map for this to interfere, not interfere in such that I don't care what people do at home. But like Leslie was saying, you know, this is going to be on the streets, this, you know, because it's not, it's not just people going to buy their cannabis and go home and use it in a good way that they need or, or would like. It's going to be on the streets. And we have throughout the year, a lot of young people coming in here for different athletic activities. And it, it's during the winter, it's during the summer, it's during the spring and fall. And they're all underage, most of them. So is that, is that what we need to, to kind of do here? Because we get revenue from this? You know, because it isn't, it isn't impossible for people to order online or even go to the closest town that does have dispensaries. Does it have to be in this little town, right in the face of visitors? And, and also locals who live here? And we don't, we don't necessarily need it. I don't think the, the dollar should even come into the picture here because there are other ways to make money for, um, for the region and for the town and village. So, um, that's my thoughts here as I sit, waiting for the meeting to finish. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I speak from the phone?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Just identify your name, please.
I'm Mary Liz Alexander.
Hi, Mary Liz. Go ahead.
It seems, it seems to me that it's the obvious point at this, right now, is to opt out, to give time to, these last couple of speakers have been talking about reasons to vote against it when it comes up for a vote, if it comes up for a vote among the, you know, for everybody in the community. But it seems to me, you need more time to think about it and figure out, answer all these questions that are being raised. So I urge you to opt out for right now.
Thank you.
If I may, I just have a question for the board.
The purpose of the hearing is to hear your, your viewpoints. We're, as I said in the beginning of the meeting, that's what we're here for, to listen to you, you folks, so that we can make the best decision that we can.
Raise it up the comment, Justin.
Um, all right, so in this meeting, I've heard, you know, going back to the dollar figure discussion, I would love to know as, you know, a citizen of the village, you know, if there's any language being put in place, talking about where the money would go. You know, obviously the money would come in, there's a dollar figure there. But I know there have been other examples of tax dollars going towards education systems, to the school district, to infrastructure. You know, I think that it would be great to see not just what the money is coming in, but where that money is going and how it could potentially do good for the community. Yeah, that would be one. And then, you know, I don't, I don't see the substance of cannabis personally as anything, you know, more or worse than alcohol consumption. And I'd just like to offer the perspective that we have numerous liquor stores in this town, as well as places that you can buy beer. You know, I don't see the two as, or, you know, I see it as something that adults can make adult decisions. And if that's available to adults, um, you know, it's up to them to make good decisions. And I think it also leads to our local law enforcement to make sure that things are, you know, regulated and stay in the hands and use of adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can I make a comment? Hello?
Please say your name first, please.
Okay, my name is May Chow, last name's Chow, C H O W. And as a new resident of Lake Placid, um, I think it's a good option for us to opt out and to put it to the people, the village, uh, the village to vote on this. I grew up in Mississippi and in Mississippi, they, they came up with all these, um, riverboat gambling, the casinos. And it, it might, it did generate revenue for the state of Mississippi, but then it also gave this, this image. You got to think about what the community is about, going back to, you know, this is Lake Placid, we got the Olympics, we got sports, we've got this and that, you know, that's geared towards the outdoors and stuff. If you have a dispensary, I mean, is it just going to be one? And then maybe multiple, you know, locations? And what else are they going to be selling there? I mean, do we really want a head shop like on Main Street where they're selling, you know, pipes? And, I mean, yeah, there, there is a place for cannabis use for medical reason and all that. But then you have to think about, well, now we're exposing people to, um, these things that we weren't exposed to before. I mean, I like going down Main Street and, and checking out the stores and, you know, shopping locally. But do we really want to open up that door and bring in a dispensary that may, um, expose the town to things that we don't want our children? Or do people, other people come to visit to see? Does that make sense? Because like I said, like, as with the casinos down in Mississippi, I mean, my family has a little grocery store. And people that used to come into the store to buy things with, you know, like extra change and all that, that's all gone to the casinos. Their people are just, now there's signs that are always, hey, do you have an addiction to gambling? Because people are, are going to the casinos and putting their money into these casinos. And I really, I mean, I feel like the look that these casinos, you know, these big buildings, people are in there smoking, they're, they don't even see outside or what anything looks like outside. I don't know, you, you've got to like, look at the studies and maybe see where these towns, these small towns in Mississippi, how they've had to deal with gambling, like bringing in a certain, uh, you know, industry for revenue, how that impacts the community.
Thank you. Anybody else? We've got 10 more minutes for people to speak.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Hi, was that Ray?
This is Ray Hablicek.
Hello, Ray.
Hi, shall I speak?
Yes.
Okay, hi, uh, Jay and the board. Thank you for having another meeting on this issue. Uh, I, I spoke at the last meeting and expressed my severe concerns about opening dispensaries on Main Street in Lake Placid. I, at that time, testified based on the idea that we have a huge substance abuse problem in our village, our town and in our nation. And the last thing that we should be doing is enhancing or increasing that problem by telling our kids that it's okay to walk into stores on Main Street and buy drugs. It's a very bad idea. I treat drug addicts, I teach, I treat teenagers that are using pot that are severely disturbed as the result of using pot. It's the last thing our village needs. But tonight, I want to change what I'm saying a little bit by emphasizing the fact that this could cost, cost Lake Placid a lot of money. And I'll tell you why. And I'll tell you why, because Lake Placid really has the identif- identity of a health tourism uh, village. People come to Lake Placid because of the healthy lifestyle that we enjoy in Lake Placid. They like the skiing, they like the, they like the lakes, they like the hiking, they like the fact that we have young athletes that train here all year round. Uh, the health aspect of Lake Placid is invaluable. If you open up marijuana dispensaries on Main Street, you're basically subverting the idea of health tourism in our beautiful village and increasing the idea that uh, this is a village that has a libertine attitude about young people uh, smoking drugs. Reminding the board of what I said at the last meeting, the research is unequivocal that young people under the age of 25 that use uh, marijuana have a much higher rate of suicide. And in my experience as a clinical psychologist over the last 10 years, I can testify that many of the deaths that I've seen among our young people in our village have been complicated by substance abuse. So I vote very strongly against and urge this board to consider the impact on health and the impact on health tourism to our village. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Ray.
I'm confused. I thought we were talking about the town of North Elba, not the village of Lake Placid.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant, I'm.
I thought the village already opted out so that Main Street isn't the issue. Isn't that correct or not?
Uh, you're absolutely right. I apologize. I meant the town of North Elba. I'm down in Florida right now, maybe the sun has gotten to me a little bit, but I meant the town of North Elba, which of course includes the village of Lake Placid. The town of North Elba.
The village of Lake, village has already opted out, I think.
I, I, I got you, man. I'm telling you that, in my opinion, you're correct. I said, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. I meant the town of North Elba. The town of North Elba is identified with our beautiful, outdoor, healthy environment for children in particular and adults. If you pass this, if you allow these dispensaries in the town, you are destroying the health attractiveness of our village. That could cost the village thousands, if not millions of dollars, in addition to increasing the substance abuse problems that our youth suffers from already, which is considerable. Alright, does that straighten it out?
No, I, I don't, I don't just, I, I'm not arguing with that. It's just that you and the previous person were both talking about dispensaries on, on the, on Main Street. And I don't think that, that really isn't the issue, I think.
You're absolutely right. I, I said, I'm sorry about that. I don't want dispensaries anywhere in the town of North Elba.
I mean, and right now, the, right now, the issue is just whether they're gonna opt out, and then it'll be decided by the voters later. I don't think we need to discuss, I don't think we need to discuss the pros and cons of final decision. We just need to decide whether we're gonna opt out.
We have someone in the audience, a person who would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Teresa Lindsay. Um, I've raised children in the first, and the ski community is not without its challenges. Uh, I've raised my own three children here, and I work directly with the youth of Lake Placid for the past, and Wilmington for the past nine years. Our children on a regular basis see visitors coming, relaxing, partying, and freely spending money in our town, which of course, as a tourist town, we hope they spend more money and we have more tourists coming in. But for our children and for parents, parenting children here, it definitely is a challenge because children sometimes lack the ability of discernment between these two different parts of their lives. The decision being put before the board tonight, as I see it, is to decide whether we're going to continue to perpetuate adult decisions on our youth. The dispensaries have age restrictions, we know that, and we certainly hope that we don't see any of our youth inside these dispensaries. We certainly hope that we, we know that we're not gonna see the youth outside handing money over to an adult to go in to make the purchases because it'll be cost prohibitive for them.
Yep.
So however, like the other messages that we battle with our youth, the dispensary affirms for our children and students here, that marijuana is okay. It normalizes a drug for our youth. As was already stated, the research is overwhelming about the negative effects of marijuana on developing the brain, as discussed by Mike Nerny, who is also is an expert in substance abuse prevention and presented at school. He suggests that individuals wait till they're at least the age of 24, when the brain is fully developed to make decisions about partaking in alternative substances. Imagine that all the children learn between the birth and age five. They learn how to walk, they learn how to talk, they learn how to dress themselves and feed themselves. Student brains are developing, although much harder to see, our teens' brains are developing at the same rate, and smoking marijuana has been proven to arrest brain development. As I stated, our youth will not be buying from the dispensaries, but will be going to their, could potentially end up, as we normalize this drug, going to the streets to make their purchases because it would be more cost effective for them. This could be a deadly scenario to an increase in street marijuana that's being laced with molly and fentanyl, and we know that to be true. That's a potential situation we have normalized by allowing dispensaries in our town. But the final, final decision, rather to opt in or out, or of allowing dispensaries in our community, should not be based on revenue for this town, as has been discussed. It should not be based on wanting to open and own your own dispensary, should not be a deciding factor either. Conveniences for those who do partake should also not be a deciding factor into whether we opt out or not. Is the board in a position to speak tonight about the long-term effects of dispensaries on small communities like ours, on the youth of small communities like ours, who already have dispensaries in place? Why not make a fully informed and educated decision about what is best for everyone in this town, including our most vulnerable population, the youth of Lake Placid? Opting out does not eliminate the possibility of moving forward at a later date. What it does do, though, is it allows the board to be informed and well-educated of the overall impact that this decision will have. So I ask that you please take the time necessary, make an educated and informed decision. Opt out now, do the research, and be educated on the decision that's made. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Yeah, if I can make a final one.
We, uh, we're running out of time, so you have to really make it brief.
Okay, it, it, it's Dr. Ray Havlicek, uh, just recalling the fact that at the last meeting, I circulated uh, many pages of research evidence on the impact of marijuana on young people. I would urge the board to very carefully read that information as per Teresa Lindsay's comments a moment ago about studying the impact in small communities like ours. That research is unequivocal. It is most medically and psychiatrically damaging to young people under the age of 24.
Thank you, Ray. Um, we have one more, one more speaker?
Yes, Brandon again. I agree with the science there. Uh, I'm just curious why these other citizens haven't been advocating to get nicotine and alcohol out of our community? Those are drugs that cause more deaths than nearly any other drug. So it's just interesting to me that it seems to be a little more emotional these days. Um, and we shouldn't be deciding it just based on money. It's something that, as New Yorkers, if we have the right to do something, we generally accept that we have the right to do that everywhere, as it's else in the state, and why shouldn't the same be true here?
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments, and I will add that uh, we're, uh, we're going to end the public hearings, but we're going right into our monthly town board meeting, our regular board meeting. You're welcome to stay on. And uh, any other comments from?
No, I was just.
I'm gonna, you can leave that on.
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Okay, uh, the hour being 6:00 PM, I'm going to call our regular board meeting to order, and we'll start by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, the first order of business, oh, for approval of the minute of November 9th, our meeting is November 9th. Dick, Derek, discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Right, right. First thing on our agenda is we'll go right into the uh, cannabis law, uh, which we've just heard a lot of comments on, and we've had, we've had one other um, hearing, not really a hearing, but an informational session about a month ago. So we've had a lot of input, and I think now it's the time that we really have to proceed and determine what we're going to do. Our time has run out. If we don't do, we have until December 31st, obviously. This is the last, that's only a couple of weeks away. So I would just, I'd like to go around the table and ask for your, your comments. Start with Emily.
Uh, I have, I do have a question for Ron first. Ron, if, so this whole, the opting out, it's, it's confusing terms, right? So let's say we opt in now.
So in other words, not opt out.
Yeah.
Let's, let's say do nothing.
There is no opting.
Yeah, let's say do nothing.
Right, 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 do nothing.
Do nothing. Um, does the public have the 45 days to petition to reverse?
You can't go to the reverse.
You can't go to the reverse.
If you don't opt out, the voters don't get to be heard on the issue. Only thing that is subject to a permissive referendum is the local law, which does opt out. So that is what is subject to a referendum, people could vote on. If you do not opt out, it's over. No one gets to be heard on it.
Yeah, if there's no local law.
That's right. Exactly.
Okay.
That's the legislature, that's a good question. The legislature has positioned us in this position.
They want us to.
And they, they, that's right.
And then, I'm just gonna take this down while I talk. Uh, if we opt out, the public has 45 days to get the petition, to get the signatures, which is 250 something.
258.
And it would be on a November ballot, not any time before.
That is correct.
Because that is the next general election. And if, what would happen if we acted within, do we have a right to act within those 45 days?
I don't understand the question.
So let's say we opt out now because we want to look at some zoning changes and some more research on something in Colorado, that we can do in 10 days, that we can do in 20 days. Can we opt in January 10th?
Yeah, you can, you can opt, opt in, because the, I want to see what you're saying. So if someone is circulated, if there's been no petition filed within the 45 days, the town board is free to do what it always does.
And not then.
You can't assume, for example, that there's gonna be a petition filed within 45 days. So until that's done, so that they answer that question, if there is a petition filed, you then would have to wait for the, yeah.
So even if, so, but I guess I'm saying, can you act before the petition is filed?
I am, I think you can, absolutely, because it hasn't been filed yet.
But after the petition is filed, can act, have to wait for.
I would research that, but I doubt that you could.
Okay. But along with that same idea, Emily, there's nothing saying that a petition can't be filed in front of 45 days. It could be filed next week.
As soon as, if someone is interested in this, and they get the signatures, the requisite signatures, and they file it, and it's applied with the law, and it has, you know.
Sure. And we can no longer opt in on our own volition. It has to go to referendum.
The voter's side.
Okay. So that was some clarifying questions I had. Um, I mean, I feel like you guys, I'm beating a dead horse here. I'll beat it again. Uh, I don't advocate selling to the youth. Uh, I think Dr. Nerny at the high school, when he presented, made a lot of great points that actually supported how legalized marijuana makes, you know, it's, it's safer, it's more expensive, there are ID requirements in order to get into a dispensary. I have no way advocating that we sell marijuana to youth. Um, one thing is that it was a lot of talk about smoking in public areas. You can't smoke marijuana wherever, you can't smoke cigarettes. So there's no smoking in public, unless you are at, we allow onsite consumption to be a very specific place where you could smoke. Um, I think whenever you regulate things, it makes them safer. Um, I don't think marijuana sold in a dispensary will be laced with fentanyl or molly. Uh, I think it's a way to diversify our economy, not just looking at the 3% revenue, which I think is a big question mark of how much money that will bring in. But I do think the idea of having different types of businesses, and I actually think that Bill is probably right, and that the Office of Cannabis Control will probably not approve more than one dispensary in North Elba. Um, but it's economic diversification, it's another business. Maybe there's two that are approved, and I think economic diversification is always a good thing, especially when you have a, a community that's completely, almost always reliant on tourism. Um, Fred talked about this a little bit, and I don't think I've talked about it much, but I, I feel like I have like some moral obligation to say this, and that what is, I've never brought up, is that if you look at the history of marijuana and why it's illegal, it's all based in racism. And I just think that needs to be said. It's based in racism and it bases prejudice. And I think that we are maybe giving, I respect New York State, maybe they didn't go about it the right way, or a methodical way that we can follow, but I respect New York State trying to, trying to make amends for what has been done. It is very clear that, you know, why is marijuana legal and alcohol isn't? And if you research the history, it comes back to racism and Zionism. And so that's something that weighs on my decision when I think about it. When I think about people saying, we don't want it here. Well, what don't you want here? Um, and, uh, and the other thing about safety is just that then no one has ever died from a weed overdose. Even the USDA says that, uh, it can't reach the brain stem, but alcohol can. And we have bars, like is our next step to get rid of bars and liquor stores and restaurants that sell alcohol? I just don't, I don't know, I don't know why we're drawing such a line in the sand with this, with this drug that's out there and it's already being used.
You took a lot of my thunder, but, so I, so ditto. I just want to reinforce a couple things Emily said, and add a couple of my own. Um, as a couple of us had said in the past, it's here, it is here, and it's not going away. And if we can control it, we're better off. And as was pointed out, the product on the street is, who knows what it is. It might be good grade, or it might be laced with fentanyl or molly or whatever. And, you know, the purpose of the dispensaries is, is not to get it to the, to under 21, we don't know. But at least it's a controlled product in these dispensaries, and I've been in a couple, not in, it's not in New York State, but in Illinois. And they are very well-run, they're very professionally run, and it's a very controlled atmosphere. Uh, the other things are, from a professional standpoint, uh, many, many people out there benefit medicinally from the product, be both, to whatever. And obviously, as pointed out, a lot of people have indicated, not just at this hearing, but through other means, that people are concerned about all this smoking. Well, that's, I don't know the exact percentage, and I'm sure it's not standard across the board, is the fact that a lot of it is not smoking, it's edibles. Um, and one point, point brought up, which has been brought up in minor discussion, was the tax dollars. And I don't think any of us are, you know, the tax dollars are nice, but that's not why a major concern, but there's nothing wrong, and it can definitely look at, of taking this, these dollar rounds, as we have with other taxes, and designate them for, in quotation marks, the greater good, for good causes. Uh, I think lastly, one caller said that, or one person said, that by having in, whether it's one or two dispensaries in North Elba, and again, on that same Main Street, in North Elba, it'll turn off visitors. Well, I don't believe the four liquor stores are turning off, generally, the, the tourist or the local person generally. So I don't, I, alcohol is here, uh, they're both here. We allow sale of one, why not the other? And I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we allow one, why not the other? And as one other person said. And as one other person said, I don't believe Emily said also that the alcohol is much more harmful than marijuana in general.
I guess you guys hit just about all the points I wanted to touch on. For me, I'm gonna throw a little monkey wrench into it. I understand all the arguments about opting out and giving us time. My concern is more logistical on the process, how it will go if we opt out and this petition goes through. I've spoken to 20 people myself this week, plus tonight's attendees, and, and at least half of them, yes, there's an honest effort to get the general population to vote on this issue. I'm concerned that through the process, the whole voting public won't be as educated as the people sitting around this table that will do our homework to make the best decision. We've heard good things on both sides. If you think we're all just set in our ways, it's not the truth. I'm proud of this board and we have the ability to be smart enough in this decision. I do take, not offense, but I don't like the fact that we're trying to draw a line connecting youth to an adult legal substance. None of us want our youth subject to this. I had a great idea, Jason, I hate to throw you into the mix, but I'm gonna.
I'm here.
His suggestion was to use this revenue we get and help with education. That's, that's what a lot of this boils down to. So a child has the ability to make a decision, but I don't want to link the child problems in with adult legalization. Does it mean I've made my mind up how I'm gonna ultimately vote? No, but you can tell that I'm leaning for dispensaries. I learned from Brendan tonight on consumables. I hadn't really thought about all the different products. So in that vein, you know, I have to give more thought and learn more. So for me right now, what I battle is, do we not make a move so that this board can do their homework? I don't want to turn my back on the public that thinks that they have the ability to make a better vote than we do. I question that. Because month to month, if you knew all the decisions we have to make and come together, if you think this board is a rubber stamp body, we're not. We all have our share arguments and I know at the end, we will, we will make a decision that's best for the most. Whether that answers your question where I stand, Jay, but that's, that's my thoughts.
Good. Pretty good for a last board meeting. You got, you got, so I guess two things or a couple of things. One is, people talk about the money and the revenue. I don't even consider the money and the revenue. North Elba isn't a poor town. We're not like some of the towns next to us that need the revenue. It's nice, but we'll survive, we'll be fine. And the other part of revenue, when revenue comes in, just like the tax revenue we got, we get from county, it can only go to certain places. So if the village collects some, we obviously can't spend in the village. So then you gotta put it to someplace the town can spend it. And it's very small piece with town sale taxes and highway. I just think the law as it stands, wait, when you read it, there's some big errors. I think, why, why can the village, for instance, have referendum by their own and we can't? So it tells me that probably politically, the village was more, had more power when the law was built than the villages, the towns did. So I just think there's a lot of areas that are screwed up on this. And the other part is, do I think that we're gonna have dispensaries? I absolutely think we're gonna have dispensaries eventually here, no question. I've seen them in Colorado, I've seen them around. They aren't a bad thing, as everybody said. They're not a, any different than, they're not gonna look like probably a couple of stores that go down the street where the red light look like, that look like head shops. Or you go to Plattsburgh, for instance, there's a dispensary down the street, they have a head shop. When people that don't know, don't know which one's which, and they probably don't even know what a dispensary is. You know, so, I mean, my part right now, I mean, I would say I would opt out and then get education. I think the education part two went on us, but it's also for us to educate the public on the information we're finding and keep it going, not, not just go and say, you know, this one's crazy, this one isn't, but let's get some actual facts and not, not work from our hearts. Let's just learn what we gotta do and move on from there.
Thank you, everybody. As far as I'm concerned, you, you pretty much know my, my viewpoints. I've been pretty explicit on it, but the main thing right now, especially after hearing so many comments of people saying, you know, put the brakes on a little bit, let, let some of the issues get taken care of better, enforcement issues we've brought up. The village has opted out to give a little more time on the work, work things out. And I don't think, actually, the cannabis operation, I think, is, is not, they haven't really progressed a lot. And there's an awful lot of things that really need to be worked out. So in respect of everybody's comments and decision from, from our speakers on, on the screen and the board, I think, you know, why, why would we jump into something that if we, we opt out, it just gives us more time for a better decision? Plus, you're gonna have another board here in two weeks. And I'm, I'm in favor of opting out and I guess I would propose that we opt out of.
You make the motion.
I would make a motion to establish a local law to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption sites as authorized under cannabis law, Article four.
I'll second.
No, can I question that for a second? Shouldn't we separate those two out?
On his motion, Nick. So you can ask to amend this.
Okay, because, I mean, I'm just looking at this two issues. And I mean, you know.
You made the motion, it's your motion, so.
You know, I'm just saying that I think, I think, I'm not saying we all have different opinions on different issues, but it's definitely two different issues. And, you know.
So what we could do though, is vote this one down or.
We can make two motions.
Right. And then we can make another motion after that.
Exactly. People want to make it this.
It was the intent for both the retail dispensary and onsite consumption, but if it pleases the board, withdraw that motion.
It's your choice, right?
I will withdraw that motion in accordance with what you said, Nick, and make, first of all, a motion for local law to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries as authorized under cannabis law, Article four, as the first one. And a local law to opt out of onsite consumption sites as authorized under cannabis law, Article four. So there's two.
There's two motions, but you only do one on the table. The first motion needs a second to be discussed.
Yeah, right, bringing them up, so.
Okay.
Okay, for the first one then, do I have a second on local law to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries as authorized under cannabis law, Article four?
Is there a second?
Sure. Just to get it going.
Further discussion?
I'd like to know feelings on my point about, do we feel we should have the right to research it? Or we want to accept the idea of the petition for the public to have a vote on it?
I'll agree with you, Derek. I believe that, nothing against the public, but between all of us, we've all heard a lot, we've all researched a lot on our own, we've asked a lot of questions, and I believe that we as a body, as a board, can make the decision, either whatever that decision is. We, you know, we were, we are elected to represent them, but we, not but. However, we have done our, we've done our due diligence. It's, it's the 11th hour, granted, but it's nothing new.
You know, but you have, if, if we opt out, you can always opt back in.
But not if there's a petition.
Not if there's a petition.
I mean, following.
And I think maybe we have to go along with the public vote.
That's the thing, and that's what.
But even after the public vote.
Right.
You still can opt in.
If you're in the vote, you can opt, you can, you're not, your hands are not tied in perpetuity. You can opt in. You absolutely can opt in after that.
If the vote supports opting out, it stays opted out.
And if, but it doesn't tie the board's hands in the future for opting in.
You can opt in.
That has to do, that has to do with the action you take tonight. The referendum will decide whether or not that gets set aside. That doesn't stop you in the future from acting as a board.
That's right.
But that just, that referendum only relates to the action that you take tonight. That's all it relates to.
That's correct.
It's not, it's not a forever thing.
So if, oh, absolutely.
So if, if we opt.
You opt out now.
We opt out.
Goes to November.
Goes to November.
They.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, you know, you got, you got, and go ahead. And the vote comes in where it supports the opting out.
Yes.
Right? So that action you took tonight is now okay. That doesn't stop the board from opting in after that.
You just have to wait until.
You can't, you can't, exactly. Your hands are not tied as elected officials. You always have the right to do that.
But not until after November.
It would be after November.
After November. So explain to me why you would go through the petition process.
Maybe, maybe there'll be no petition. I don't know that.
What, that, yeah, I think, Derek, that's.
Why would you decide to do that?
But why, why, why would the group of individuals go through that?
I, I, I would think that they would go through it because if you opt out, it'll be the people that want to opt in. That's, that's, that's the moving force for that.
I disagree with that. No, I'm just saying, I, I'm having now difficulty wrapping it around. Because.
There's no basis for a petition.
Right.
If we're just waiting.
So basically, come the first week, it's 30 Tuesday in November, whatever the vote is.
Right.
We're not bound by it, other than it reverses what we.
It, all it relates to is the action you take tonight.
Right.
All it relates to, doesn't relate to the future, doesn't tie your hands in the future. It relates to what you did tonight.
So in other words, if we opt out tonight, yeah, trying to get this straight. If we opt out tonight and thinking, just thinking, down the road, we wanted to opt in after more information.
Right.
Okay. And then we just, we, we as a board, the new board, decide middle of January to opt that we say we want to opt in.
Wait, middle of January 2023?
Right. No, 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 by all means.
Okay, okay.
By all means, we get together, we say, however, there's a petition filed. We can't opt in at that point.
I don't, I'm not 100% certain.
Because, because the petition is a plus. And fun. So now we've got to wait till November, okay? And wait till November and the vote, whichever way it goes, okay? Then we can opt in after the vote.
Absolutely, you can't, absolutely. You absolutely can't.
So you have to start, but you'd have to have another law.
Right. You have to pass a law to rescind the law that's in place.
Right.
Because the law that's in place is the opting out law. You rescind it.
Right, because it was totally.
Rescind, rescind, right, right. And as soon as you rescind it, you're automatically in.
Oh, okay.
The opting in is rescinding the law that opted out. You rescind, vacate.
But just to speak, I know that this is not what we're thinking. We're not thinking, let's dismiss what the public said. It's more like how much are our hands tied? You know, it was my impression that our hands were permanently tied if the referendum.
Oh, God, no.
You can opt back in, but you can't.
The referendum only relates to the action you take tonight. All it relates, not the future.
And so one other thing that I want to add, that of course, this is process moving, my thought process is moving forward, is that a lot of other communities has, have said, I guess I'll take Kerry's time, for example, is, you know, we're opting, we're opting out for now with the intention of opting in, in the near future.
Right.
So I would say that that's what, if we decide that we are gonna opt out now, that is, which I think Jack is how Jack feels too, he won't even be here anymore. That it's, we're, we are opting out now, for me, it's about zoning. And, you know, and I'm happy to tackle that aspect of it, is where we want them, what they look like. And so it gives us a few months to do that. But I guess I'm saying to the public, you opt dinners, or you don't file a petition. Because I, I, I think that personally, I, I, I would consider opting out for now, but I want to opt in in the future with some zoning controls.
So I'm not 100, I'll be candid, I'm not 100% certain that the filing a petition would tie your hands about opting in. Because the opting in, by thinking of, you're really just, you're rescinding a local law that you passed. If you pass a local law that I opt out, right? And in the future, you have the right to rescind that. And I, I, I don't think that the filing a petition would tie your hands in rescinding a local law. I'd have to check that. I don't think it would.
You're saying.
I said that initially, but.
You're saying before November.
Yes, I think, yeah, as I think it through, your action, you're passing a local law, which you're empowered to do. You're also empowered to rescind and vacate that local law by majority vote on public notice and all that. It's just like we do any other law that we amend. You amend the land use code, you do it by a local law, you amended. This would be rescinding a local law.
In a normal process, I understand that. So I still don't understand the basis for the petition.
So I, you get me, time, we'll search that tomorrow.
Which means we meet again before the end of the year.
Like, well, can we opt in later yet, but.
I think, you know, like I said, thank you, Ron.
Because that's.
You added a lot to it, you know, and, and I think we all have our own thoughts on everything.
Yeah.
But like I said, you added a twist.
I got it.
Okay, so I'm in favor, and I'll throw it out there, of this resolution, okay? Tabling it for now.
Okay.
I mean, do something by December 31st.
Yeah.
Isn't there a grace period? Is there a grace now? No, there is. I just wanted to get the law in, to get it in, I guess.
Oh, the five, yeah.
You have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, there's.
I get it. The answer is tomorrow.
Okay, but, but the point is, in other words, the local law, we have to vote by, by end of December 31st. But you don't.
To be filed. So you have to have a special meeting very soon.
Okay.
Because then we're gonna send it down to the Secretary of State and have him file.
Okay.
But I will have the answer tomorrow because that'll be all I work on.
Okay, I'm in favor of tabling it for now, getting the absolute legal facts and diversity meeting, you know, as soon as possible.
I'll.
As soon as we all can get together.
I am as well, and I'll, I'll be available to a.
Special meeting.
To a special meeting.
I can't hear you.
Could you vote subject to your information?
No, because there's.
Yeah, no, I wanna, no.
You made, good ideas are tabled, just have a special.
So is there a motion to table the local law to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries as authorized under cannabis?
Yes.
Derek?
They both browned out.
Derek?
Yep.
Discussion?
Yes. No.
All in favor? Close, Karen. Okay, and then we would do the same for this.
Yeah, so.
No.
Do the same.
I'm.
Do the same.
Read the book.
But what we, all you want to know.
I think we're.
No, the second one, you can read it.
Make the motion.
Local law to opt out of onsite consumption sites as authorized under cannabis law. So we have the retail and the onsite.
Well, I don't.
Wait a second.
I'm just saying, with, as long as we're getting the answer on the petition, let's take all the information we get on both aspects before we make a decision.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion.
This is fact finding, let's.
Let's get them all. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, we table the second.
Also, that was my floor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Derek. Discussion, all in favor?
All right.
I oppose Karen. Okay, so.
So we're at hold.
I will, I will discuss with Ron tomorrow and we should do this.
I am, I am not available Thursday.
Okay.
Any other one? We plan on Friday.
Sure.
Bye. Steve Ronzaville.
I'm not available Thursday.
And that's enough time for a legal move?
We could do it emergency.
I'm gonna know that.
Seventeen to 31, I think they only need five.
Get it on, we could get it.
I'll keep getting the papers.
Put it on our website.
Yeah, so we'll do it on Friday.
What's the date?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Good fun day away.
As soon as Ron gets back in, we'll, in time, just make sure he's available.
As soon as Ron gets back in, we'll split the time, just make sure he's available. Okay. He's back. Ask the mandate, Ron, Friday, what would be a time for you to. Okay, let's do it, what's better, morning or afternoon?
Morning.
I do have a dentist appointment that I really need to go to. But I could do it at like ten.
Ten, why don't we say? Ten AM Monday, I mean, excuse me, Friday. Well, that's okay, you know.
Ten AM Friday.
Ten AM Friday. Thank you. Thank you, Ron, again.
Yeah, that's, it's a novel question.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, I mean.
I think it through, I gotta check it, because you know.
Because I, I thought I had it.
Yeah.
You ruined that. Okay, just, just quickly on this one, obviously, we all know about it, and we've got our policies now. Governor Hokel announced masks will be required to be worn in all indoor public places unless businesses or venues implement a vaccine requirement. So you guys saw the email I sent out.
Yeah.
We've got, everybody's wearing masks. And we'll continue to do so until January when this, when this ends. And we also set up the policy even for, I mean, this obviously applies to town hall, it applies to the airport, it applies to Gregwood, it applies to recycle center, any town facility. I think that's pretty interesting. We've done through this before. But just so we have it in the official ministry as well.
Jay, I've got a question for you, as a county question. Essex County is fully on board with this.
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready to say that. We already made for today.
Emergency was put out.
Yeah, because a few counties are not on board with it, and I just.
I see what it is.
I figured each one would be and everything, but the locals went through it, I believe Saratoga County said they, no.
Yeah.
Which I don't understand, but that's okay.
So now, I got a number of questions on, to eliminate any confusion on the vaccine requirement, a venue could have, they literally would have to have somebody at the door.
Yeah.
Checking every single. Every single required, what do they call the?
The card. I was, I was out to dinner the past couple nights, and where I was, some, somebody came in and insisted they didn't need to wear it, walking around because they were vaccinated. And the, and the bartender or whatever person was, explained it very well.
Because it's either one or the other, it can't be both.
Well, the thing is, there's nobody, to my knowledge, in the North Country, no business, that has a vaccine mandate. I did not know that I know.
Like, for example, the question asked from one of the hotels, okay, we have somebody at the door checking the identifications and shot card there. If a guy comes up, he says he's, he's going to wear a mask the whole time, but hasn't been fully vaccinated, he cannot get in. That's one or the other.
No, if you have a vaccine mandate, I mean, if you have a set vaccine mandated program at your business, that's what it is. You don't get, just like New York City.
Yeah.
For restaurants and entertainment, you know, if you're going to a basketball game, you have to show proof.
Yep.
And you can't say, well, I'm not vaccinated, I'm wearing a mask, no, you don't.
No, no.
You don't get it.
Okay, climate farming communities, Emily?
I think I'm going to go with Jason, right?
Jason?
No, I don't have the resolution.
First off, here's the model resolution.
I've never seen it, but. So I think the reason why we're doing this, if I'm remembering right, is because we only agreed to the commission, like that task force, that was formed, we didn't agree to be a climate smart community. Right, so any city, town, village, or county government in New York State can take a stand by adopting the Climate Smart Communities pledge. Local communities may amend the preamble of the pledge below, we don't have to read this part, we're not going to read this part.
Emily, I believe the biggest reason for it is that the first phase of climate smart was village alone.
Yeah.
Now they're entering into the information from town.
So whereas the town of North Elba believes that climate change poses a real and increasing threat on our local and global environment and is primarily due to the burning of fossil fuels, and whereas the effects of climate change will endanger our infrastructure, economy, and livelihoods, harm our farms, orchards, and ecological communities, including native fish and wildlife populations, spread of invasive species and exotic diseases, reducing drinking water supplies and recreational opportunities, and pose health threats to our citizens. And whereas we believe that our response to climate change provides us with an unprecedented opportunity to save money, to build live, livable, energy independent, and secure communities, fiber innovation economies, healthy and safe schools, and resilient infrastructures. And whereas we believe the scale of greenhouse gas emissions reductions required for climate stabilization will require sustained and substantial effort. And whereas we believe that even if emissions were dramatically reduced today, communities would still be required to adopt, adapt to the effects of climate change for decades to come. It is hereby resolved that the town of North Elba, in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to climate, changing climate, adopts the New York State Climate Smart Communities pledge, which compromises, comprises the following ten elements. One, build a climate smart community. Two, inventory emission thresholds, a plan for climate action. Three, decrease energy use. Four, shift to clean renewable energy. Five, use climate smart material management. Six, implement climate smart land use. Seven, enhance community resilience to climate change. Eight, support a green, innovative economy. Nine, inform and inspire the public. Ten, engage in an evolving process of climate action.
Have a motion.
Sure.
Second on that?
Second.
Derek, for the discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Close, carry. And you gave that to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just quickly on the rotary bus shelter update, we've got to a point where, you know, the foundations were poured, and I believe the two of them have actually been built, but they're going to fold and put them in in the spring for some weather. So, but it's all, all good, and they, they just got to find a third location. One is at Cascade Acres, the other is at the Four Seasons. And I think that's going to be really visible on the way in, so it's going to look nice. And this, the third location that they suggested really wasn't viable. We went up and spoke with the owner, and it's just too, didn't really have a place where buses, the bus could go and pull off.
So are two fully built and in place?
Two, no, the, they're built, but they're got, you know, at least in sections.
Is there studs in the sand though, for all winter?
Yeah.
So there's things sticking up?
Yeah.
I believe they didn't.
Maybe they're going to drill them in.
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
They'll probably drill them in.
I hope they do tap, but if they're sticking up, we got to do something.
No, they're, they're going to look. I didn't, I didn't see them out there, but.
I mean, because if there were studs sticking up, they couldn't stall them. Big deal.
There, there are. There are.
Okay.
I guarantee, they're going to drill.
I'll check it tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure. There's no reason not to do it.
Thank you, right, when you go by, you really can't see anything coming up, because I know in the plan, I mean, they did have, they did have an acres.
Okay.
Okay, FSU Games contribution, Kathy, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, it's just, we're getting to the FSU Games contribution, which you can jump in at any time, but I'll, I'll just go ahead and explain it. Most of you guys were involved a couple of years ago when both the town and village supported, made. I think it was during a work session though, so it was never recorded. We, we agreed to provide $25,000 a year for five years. And we've done that two years, I believe. And Kathy, since, since we, we didn't do it last year because I think.
Wasn't much of it. So we did it nineteen and twenty.
This is for, this is for a resolution authorizing the funding of World University Games in the, in the sum of $25,000 for the next three years, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, this year. It's a budget for twenty-one? Twenty-two, twenty-three. Kathy, is that budgeted for twenty-one?
Yes, it is. And it's also in the budget for 2022.
Yeah, and twenty-three.
Well, we haven't, but, we haven't done the budget for 2023, but that would be the intent.
Let's get up. Be waiting for it.
I'll get right on it.
We did a three, we did a three for five years, two years ago.
Yeah.
And, and so did the village, and the village had a lot of paperwork on it, so we're kind of going on.
State games.
Yeah, this is totally different. And then the county also pledged $50,000, so to get it, get it going, so.
So we're double paying.
Yeah.
Well, just, just thinking of what's going on here, we've got $200 million going into our budgets.
Did I hear correctly today that they canceled the CERN?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was because of COVID.
No. Well, it was postponed.
But that doesn't, doesn't affect us.
Oh, no, no, that's what I'm saying, they postponed it, then they canceled it.
So can I get a motion authorizing the funding of World University Games, as previously just stated, $25,000 per year for the next three years?
So.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
All right, sorry.
Close carry. Kathy, you got your motion?
Thank you.
The next thing, I emailed this out to everybody, I hope you got a chance to read it. The county did a resolution in opposition to Governor Hokel's proposed closure of the Mariah Shock Incarceration Facility located in Mariah, New York. Obviously, it has extremely worth of value for their, for their community, and also, it's, it's been a very successful operation there.
And, and a lot of the, whereas we used to see, when Gabriel was open, all the inmates working in the community, obviously don't have that anymore. And now that's where they come from, if they're in the community. And if, you know, if they're in communities in Essex County, that's where they're coming from. So that, that's, that would take a lot, take away from that, too.
And then it's taking, Mariah itself has taken some hits with lots of mills and mines and other heavy line industry.
The problem is the people getting sent there with, with our new crime policy. They're not. I don't want to say they're not.
They're getting released.
That's the problem, that's the number of inmates.
That's exactly what it is.
That's what it is.
Because that's only one of two facilities, like it can state, right? Now we're down to, now we just kind of, sad thing is, they really won't. They reduce their stimulus.
Well, they have it for a good record.
But it works.
But no matter how much we support them, if they don't have inmates.
Inmates, you're absolutely.
Then all we're doing is paying payroll.
That's exactly right.
For the time being, you know, the facility, it's going to have a devastating economic.
Oh, no question about it.
I would ask for a resolution to support the county resolution in opposition to Governor Hokel's proposed closure of the Mariah Shock Incarceration Facility located in Mariah, New York.
So. Second.
Derek, discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Close, carry. And what I'm going to do, we'll get that motion, Lori, printed up, and I'll send it into the same sources as the county, including Senator Stack and Governor Hokel's office, and a couple of us here.
Even if it was looked at for a different use, just to maintain.
Yeah.
A little work for it. I think they bring that up when they talk.
On the agenda, you want to have the Ironman task force.
Yeah, I want to keep everybody a little bit up to date, because we're not hearing a lot about it now, but we will, and you're all, you saw the Ironman survey that was out there. Hopefully, everybody took it. So we've met approximately five or six times, and the, the task force, you think of many, but they want to use task force. The task force is comprised of representing different communities, other words, you know, King, Wilmington, Jay, and like Placid, North Elba. And some people, there's a wide range of viewpoints on the race, on the event, I should say. And we're getting near the end, there is a new contact person for Ironman, in other words, Bob Gregg, Gregg's boss, who's very informative, I mean, very receptive to anything that is said. And we've come up with a few things that we're concerned about, and we had a meeting this morning, and Dave, gentleman's name, Dave Christensen. Kristensen, yes. He, he says Ironman is very receptive to what we're saying, and they're count, not countering, coming up with ways to come, go along with the community slash task force, just asking for, proposing. And, which I, because we have a lot of leverage, like Placid does, they want us. They want this race. We are the only race left that sells out of their, all their inventory. And just quickly, we meet every couple of weeks, the survey went out, and, you know, we had the opportunity to get on it and watch, listen to the results, which we did. And it was a close, I believe, my interpretation is, majority of the people in the communities support it. And many proposals are on the table, and Ironman is receptive to them. Dave did not tip his hand this morning, he, next meeting, which is probably three weeks from now, because two weeks is in the holidays. Three weeks from now, he will come back to the task force with proposals. And the big points are that we'd like to see in general are more community involvement, as far as not us involved with them, with them, involved with us. But it used to be, in the old Graham days, as I keep referring to them as. And more recognition of us, as opposed to, we're going to come in, take over your towns, towns, do it, and goodbye. And also more, lastly, the amount of money returned to the communities by, I mean, we, we saw, we've seen the hockey box and other things, hockey box, police car, ambulance, et cetera. We've seen all those things come back to us, but in the last, last two years, it's gone down, and down, and down. And I believe this year, or maybe last, two years ago, 2019, it was around a total of $45,000. Obviously, it used to be a lot more than that. But that's where, that I just wanted to give you a little update, that it is not, it's not forgotten, and, you know, it's, it's an ongoing process. And the task force will eventually come to us and the village. So we'll go from there and see what we can do, and in hindsight, and I'll throw this out, I think there's so much involved. And the fact is, they want an answer, Ironman, and I don't blame them, by the end of the January, whether we want the race, we want to negotiate in hindsight, and I'll throw this out, this is not the task force, this is me talking. I think we should have gone for a two-year deal instead of a one-year deal. It would give us more time to work this out. Now we got to go back to the table already. Yeah, so just throwing that out.
And the other townships, Jay, Wilmington, they're all included in.
Yes, 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 as a matter of fact, there's a member, one member of the task force in Wilmington that goes to Roy's office to zoom in. And Roy is usually there, listening. So Roy's involved directly, mainly because of this office, anyway. So Roy's there, I'm obviously there, as far as other representatives, elected officials, no. But, you know, but the town people. So, and like I said, and, you know, we've talked about, you know, it's, it's a, it's, we've all got to eventually talk about it and get in and communicate as far as the boards and everything like that. And I think that's what we're going for, but unfortunately, we have to do this in a six-week period. So, and we, and I, I communicated with MJ today after the meeting, a couple of emails, we go back and forth. And we hope to have two more meetings. One more meeting for Dave to come back with his suggestions, as I said, and the other one, the last meeting, to come up as a task force, task, task force with recommendations to, to the communities. There you go. So far.
Derek, what are they looking for for a five-year gap?
No, no, they're not even looking. They're not looking, they just, they just. No, no, they're not even looking, they're not looking, they just, they just, Ironman is playing everything, is not saying much. I mean, Dave participates in the meetings, but he's not showing his hand, the next one, the next meeting, we will get a lot of things they they propose, I mean, a lot of people, as an example, a couple examples, people, which some of these are reasonable, I think so are, they want to see more participation in the athlete village, they want to see, some want to see a total change of the course, some people, some of them, yeah, exactly. Some want to see a different type of year, well, you can't do it June, you can't do it September, you know, and so that's, but, you know, some of them are reasonable, in other words, like, more, our participants, if local vendors want to be in the athlete village like they used to, you know, those of you who remember ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two, there's a lot of local vendors in there, that's reasonable, and he tipped his hand, saying that's a possibility. But a lot of these things, to me, are not not reasonable, but we'll see, and see what they come back with.
Good, thank you. Kathy, budget adjustments?
Yes, before I go into the twenty-twenty-one budget adjustments that I emailed to everybody, I wanted to ask the board about the assessors' copy, are we budgeted for twenty-twenty-two? And it turns out that the actual quote that came in for the machine that Todd would like to have replace his his sharp, is going to require an additional approximate three hundred and fifty dollars for the year for twenty-twenty-two, and if the board's okay with that, I would bring that paperwork to Jade tomorrow to sign off on.
I don't think that's an issue, Kathy, come see me.
Okay. Okay, great, and then also pertinent to twenty-twenty-two's budget, as boards aware, we had proposed a wage scale amendment to our union contract, and I had not, we talked about it at the workshop. And the only issue we had at the workshop was that they had our contract dates incorrect on the amended agreement, I contacted Steve Party from the union today, he called me and said that it's at the attorney's level, they're just gonna make those changes and send them to us, I just wanted to let you guys know that that's still on the radar, we just haven't received anything back from the union yet on that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I did email the December meeting budget adjustments to everybody, did you all get those?
Yeah.
All right, rather than me going through, everything is basically the same as last month, and we're gonna see similar ones for the gas for next month, for the end of the, for the end of twenty-twenty-one, so does anybody have any questions on them specifically?
No, that's pretty straightforward.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out, like I said, next month, in January, I will have a budget adjustment for December of twenty-twenty-one's expense for gas and diesel, and also for the last payroll of the year that will affect, it looks like, the cemetery for half of one of our employees' wages, and also the Park District and Craigwood for the last payroll. The amounts will be different, because we can't predict what overtime costs will be, but I do want to point out that the large amount for Craigwood is is due to mostly health insurance bio and or longevity for the employees at that location. All the hospital and medical insurance through twenty-twenty-one have been paid, so there will not be a budget adjustment for that for next, for December of twenty-twenty-one, so if if anybody has any other questions, please feel free to ask.
I'm here. So Kathy, I got a quick question.
Okay.
Yeah, in reference to the uniform clothing allowance, so did the two former employees, did they use their full allowance?
I would, without having it in front of me, I cannot answer that a hundred percent accurately, but I would, I would err, I would err on the on the side that, yes, they probably did, because they would have been fools not to.
I know, that's the point, I just, it was just like a question of whether they did.
So. I can't get back to you on that.
No, no, I mean, yeah, if it's anything different, let me know, but I would say the dollar amount it is, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Mostly do, except the budget amendments. Derek?
Yep.
Got it, discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Close, carry. Okay, the audits, approval, the audits, you guys have all, look at them, sign them.
So.
Derek?
I get it.
Question, all in favor?
Hi.
Close, carry. And let's see, I guess, Eric, you had requested executive session?
Under personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready report? Sure, I can report on this meeting. The Development Commission met for their year-end kind of review retreat, so I think we met for three hours, and we talked about our goals, the what we accomplished in twenty-twenty-one, what we want to accomplish in twenty-twenty-two, and I think that Dean and Haley will be coming to the January meeting to talk about what we hatched out in that meeting, and maybe some structuring, a new leadership on the Development Commission.
Emily, will will your housing committee be given like a year-end report or sometime during the winter?
It's folded into the Development Commission.
Oh, okay.
And so is Appearance Committee and Arts, actually, Arts Lines will probably do their own, but Appearance Committee and Housing Committee will.
So it's consolidated, okay.
A motion to go into executive session, personnel.
So.
Derek?
Lauren looks like she wants that.
Before, okay, I'll say, we're gonna do that, but.
So for this, we're gonna get a meeting on Friday, the public investor invited to it, right?
Yes.
Will you be streaming live?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, my four-hundred-eighth meeting, I thought that was my last, but.
We should have made the cake for profit.
We'll save it, okay?
We'll save it.